That's it.
How you got mine?
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, June 30th, 2009, meeting of the Glendale Redevelopment Agency.
Public meeting. Okay, welcome to the joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. May we have a roll call for the city council?
Council members Draymond, Friedman, Najarian, Weaver, Mayor Quintero.
And may we have a roll call for the agency, please?
Agency members Friedman, Najarian, Quintero, Weaver, Chairman Draymond.
Here. May we have your report?
The agenda for the June 30th, 2009, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was posted on Thursday, June 25, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, let me go to George Chapchan, Director Parks Recreation, for the staff report. George?
Thank you, Mr. Starbird. Members of the agency...
Did I read it into the record? I didn't read it into the record. The item...
Can I take it all back?
Okay. At item one, Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services regarding proposed design development plans and documents for the Griffith Manor Park renovation project.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, members of the agency and City Council. Previously, we came through with concept plans for the Griffith Park Master Plan or Concept Plan. We engaged Hirsch and Associates to go through the concept plan with the community. We had a number of community meetings. Mr. Hirsch went back, put some bones on that plan, on that skeleton, and now is back to talk about some of the improvements in that park. Notably, I think he's going to talk about the community building, which you hadn't seen before. At one point, it was just a placeholder for the community building, but he further refined that and is here to talk about that and some of the other improvements to the park. I will call him up. When we were here, you also asked us to look at the parking issue and crosswalk at the park, whether or not we can squeeze in angled parking. We do have Jono Bagdanyan here, who's with the parking. He's the transportation administrator. So Jono was also here to talk about that. But let me call up Pat Hirsch, who can walk us through briefly the design phase of this park. Pat?
See, Jono?
There he is.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Pat Hirsch, Hirsch Associates, and I'm here to present Griffith Manor Park Design Development Documents to you today. I assume you all have the pamphlet, and if you have any questions, just shoot them out at me as I'm going through. So what you have before you here on the left-hand side is the existing Griffith Manor Park layout. You have the road that goes through the middle of the park, parking lot in the back, the large picnic shade canopy, and to the right of that is the existing community center, or community building, I should say. Behind that is the horseshoe pit. Over to the left-hand side, about midway down, is the existing play area. You have a fairly new piece of play equipment and new swings there. And the rest is just existing mature trees. And there at the very bottom, what that line represents right above the street is the new line, the new right-of-way line. We're going to push Flower Street back as far as widening. On the very right-hand side, where the little S curve thing is...
I have a question. I'd like to interrupt you instead of waiting to the end. So I'll ask, the trees, how many are going to be removed? It looks like you're saving just about every tree that's in there.
No, we're actually not going to be removing any trees at all. The only trees that were removed were the ones in the widening, and they weren't done by us. They're done by the public works.
That's good. Save them all.
We actually took, I think we have nine trees that we've saved and we're going to plant on the job site from the street widening project.
Good.
Okay. Now, if you want to go back, go back one. On the right-hand side, what we had was the concept that we presented, the master plan concept we presented you last time. Basically, we have the, on the left-hand side, we have the play area and an area north of the play area where we were going to expand the play area. We have a series of shade structures, picnic shade structures throughout the park. We have a water play area, and we have a small tot lot just north of the water play area, a parking lot, basketball courts, and then we had the community center with a patio out back. Now you can flip to the next one. This is the design development document, and basically, there's been a few subtle changes on this project, and I think they're for the better. In the play area, on the original master plan, we had the tot lot, which basically stuck out into the large lawn area. Since then, we've decided to take that tot lot and put it in the expanded area, the play area, and use that as a tot lot instead of putting an older children's piece of play equipment there. The shade structures and picnic structures have basically stayed the location they are. We have a final design on the water play area, and so that's basically stayed in the same location. We were able to save those trees. Originally, we thought we were going to have to take some trees out down to do that, but we were able to save those trees. We have the parking lot. The basketball court hasn't changed, and now we have a footprint for the, and elevations for the community center. If you want to go to the next slide. This is what we're proposing for the community center. It's about a 2,500-square-foot community center. You have a large assembly room. It's about 1,300 square feet. In that community room, you have a kitchenette with a refrigerator and a food warmer and a sink, and then you have counter space on the left-hand side of the building with storage, electrical room on the north, and then a closet cabinet on the other end. This will accommodate a fairly large gathering of people. It was one of the things that came out during the public meetings, that they wanted someplace where they could go have birthday parties, and I understand that you do voting at the park, or you did do voting at the park. Well, that can be done in the building and in the patio out back. So this particular design incorporates basically what the citizens wanted out there. Also, in the restroom area, we actually added two more water closets for the females. That's more than required by code, because that's what the public wanted out there, because right now they have one. So they were very upset with that. We chose this particular type of architecture, for one thing. This area used to have the airport out there, and what we wanted to do, we couldn't replicate the airport terminal, because that's a very large building, so we didn't have the budget. So we kind of seized on an idea that, you know, gives you an idea of the old hangar-type of buildings with the curved roof. And this kind of leads into a green idea, too, is because that curved roof, you see the one curve that's lower than the upper curve? Well, on the right-hand edge of that upper curve, we're going to put a clear story. Now, that particular edge of the roof faces east, so the sun will come in the morning. You'll get natural light into the building all day long, and when the sun is setting, the entrance to the building faces southwest. So we brought that curve down, so the sun will not bear and blast right into the building. So you have solar glass in the building all the way around. We're putting solar tubes into the restroom area. I don't know if you know what solar tubes are. They bring the sunlight down through the building. You don't have to turn the lights on during the day. So we're really conscious on the electrical use of this building. All the materials in there are recyclable. We use steel mullions for the windows, solar glass. We use steel for the roof, concrete block building, brick, concrete floors, vinyl tile. Everything is virtually on the green list of today's buildings. Any questions on the buildings?
I'll ask at the end. Go ahead.
Okay. We showed you examples and color schemes for the materials we're going to be using in the building. These are your solar tubes. They're going to be mounted on the roof and come down and extend into the restroom area for daylight lighting. We'll also have supplemental evening lighting in there, so if the park is operated, you know, I think they close at, what, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock? So in the wintertime, when the sun goes down at 5:30, you'll have some supplemental lighting in there. This is an idea we came up with that kind of fits with the arch of the roof. Originally, we had proposed a ground-mounted identification sign. And several other projects we're doing, we've been requested to move the sign up, away from the public's graffiti artists. So we've used this on other projects, and I thought it fit very well into this project. So what we have here is just, the upper part is just a steel letters and steel signs. Those, the name will be uplit. There's several little lights along the bottom of that railing that light the park Griffith Manor Park up at night. You have concrete posts with downlights, and you have the city emblem on those. Now, those city emblems are about eight feet off the ground, so they're pretty high up there. The fence is proposed to be six feet high, and what we're proposing to do is use a woven wire steel mesh rather than a picket fence. I didn't like the picket fence. It looks like people were in jail or something, so we went with a woven wire mesh, and that's a three-by-three opening, very heavy steel mesh gauge, and with a two-by-two steel framing on the fencing. And the gate will be an automatic motorized gate. In the evening, the police will pull by, and they have a controller in their car that they will touch the controller, and the gate will close once the people are out of the park. And we have the pedestrian gate on the left-hand side as you walk in. Now, that pedestrian gate will be open during the day. The rolling gate will be open during the day, but everything will be shut and locked tonight. This is the small piece of play equipment we're going to put in the tot lot. A request by the community out there to have shade on any kind of play equipment we put in there, especially in the tot lot, so we incorporated the shade element. And it was requested by the maintenance department that the piece of play equipment be the same manufacturer as the one that is currently out there, so they have, you know, maintenance is basically the same on both pieces of play equipment. We have this splash pad, and this is a water play area for the tots and the children. The smaller circle is for the tots. The larger circle is for the older children. They're very popular. We have a demand for these. In every park, we do. All the valves will be controlled, and the controller will be adjacent to the splash pad, and we showed views of the valves and the controller and the cabinet that would be placed next to the splash pad. The picnic shelters, we wanted the same idea as the rounded roof as the community center, so we picked this patiently shade shelter. We didn't want the four posts, because once you get the four posts, pretty soon you have your picnic table, then you have a four-foot clearance around the picnic table for ADA. So the shade shelter gets just gigantic. So we wanted to keep it down to relative nice scale, so we have the single post. Instead of the benches, we can put a picnic table. That way, you got ADA clearance around the picnic table, and you don't get this huge post. On the right-hand side, we have an area in the park that has a very seating area, very passive seating area, and we wanted to put a steel arbor in that location. Here's some samples of various things. The benches are all going to be steel, which is recyclable. The basketball posts are just a basketball post, but they're on steel posts. The picnic tables are ADA accessible from both ends, and they're made out of concrete. And then the trash receptacles in the park will not only accept trash, they'll accept bottles, cans, and newspaper material. You already have one large one in the park now. We just want to replicate that and put four new ones around the park, so when they're picnicking, they can have easy access to the trash receptacles. And last but not least, this is a variety of plants we're suggesting to be put back in the park in the shrub areas. The turf area would just go back with a nice water-saving type of grass. We're trying to save as much grass as you have out there, so we will be putting a water-reducing type of grass. These are basically California natives, low-water requirement. They're not drought tolerant, no plants drought tolerant. I mean, if you don't give it water, it's going to die. But these are low-water requirement plants. Go through the next one. Go through the next one. As far as the trees along the front, like I said, we're maintaining all the trees that are in the park right now. But along the front, we're maintaining one existing magnolia. So the street trees along the front, what we wanted to do is match that magnolia. And then we have a situation just north of the basketball court, where we have power lines that go by, so we need smaller trees there. The business owner who owns that building that faces, he wanted some sort of a screen on there to knock the graffiti down. So what we plan to do is just a very small, low-growing tree, a tababoya-type tree, along the north edge of the tennis courts, I mean, the basketball court. And I think that is our presentation. We have pictures of the existing park now, so...
Okay, any comments or questions for the Mr. Weaver?
The rail, the fence, whatever goes around, will go entirely around the park, except when it goes up against the existing structures.
The fencing?
Fence, yes, around the park.
Yeah, what we planned on doing is, if you can go back...
Slide two.
It would help just to take a look and see what... Go through the new site plan. Okay. Along Flower Street, we're going to take that fence all the way along Flower Street and then up to Roberta, and where it hits there, there's an existing wall that goes across, so that's going to be the new fence. Plus, on the left-hand side of the basketball court, from Flower going up to the existing building, there would be another of those types of fence. There was a request that basketball court be basically closed off if need be, so that's why the fencing runs through there.
About the restroom?
On the basically west side, what we're going to do for right now, because we don't know what the development Disney's going to do next, we don't want to put a fence in there, and then they come along and put a wall up. So what we're going to do is, the fencing material right now is junior I-beams. Then they're set in a concrete curb. We're going to leave those. We're going to take the fabric off, and we're going to put new chain-link fabric along there. And in the back, you have an existing, brand-new chain-link fence that I guess the other property owner had installed. So really, when Disney builds on the west side, basically, the only thing you're going to see is the front and the one on Roberta.
And is it designed, do we have video system?
Oh, the...
In the park?
Yes. We'll bring that, the closed-circuit TV and the security system in. Well, actually, we're just going to bring conduits in for right now, and then you're...
Okay, but we are wiring it so we can.
Yes.
And those two columns in the front, where the city symbols up eight foot high?
Yes.
The columns, will they be kind of graffiti-proofed? I mean, so we can wash it off? It looks like two nice targets.
Yeah, and we've done, we got to thinking about that, and it might be nice if we did, if we took and replicated the fencing material there, so it's not a solid structure. So maybe we go with four-corner posts and something in between that makes it look like a massive column. But as far as graffiti, they're not susceptible to too much graffiti. So we can come back with a...
Please don't ask those questions. When we get the parks and rec weekly, bi-weekly reports, what are we doing, averaging vandalism and vandalism at about four parks a weekend?
Absolutely. Every weekend, you see the reports. We do get vandalism.
Even the steel, bending it open. This looks like child's play.
I'm sure they'd be able to bend that steel open. I think the mesh is pretty secure. It's pretty thick.
Mesh is like a number four bar.
Right.
It's a little more than three-quarter inches.
But noted on the column, though. I mean, I think we're going to look at if there's a material to put on it, anti-graffiti.
Sure, we can get that video system, and that's a deep park. Another question, the pedestrian gate, you said that locks down, too, when the police shut the gate?
We can make it lock down. Right now, it's just to swing open, but...
It could lock down at the same time.
Yeah, it could lock, yeah.
And so if any kids are in there, and the police don't see them, then is there a phone or something in there if they don't have a cellphone at their age?
Part of the security thing that you guys have is that...
There's a button they can push that'll connect...
If we close the gates and somebody accidentally gets...
It's a big park. It goes deep.
Well, normally, what the staff does is they'll go through the park before they close it, and if they see anybody, they'll move them out of the park, and if they can't, then they'll call the police department.
So he said the police are coming by and pushing a button and locking?
No, I think he may have meant if they need to drive through. Normally, our staff close the parks.
Okay.
You know, we have staff that go en route and close every park, but they do check the restrooms. They check the entire park before they close it.
And we are getting the parking in on the street? Looks like a parallel parking rather than diagonal parking.
I think we'd like Jono to come up and talk about the parking issue.
Let me ask a couple of questions before the gentleman goes away.
I'm done.
That water feature, is that using recycled water?
No, not right now.
So that's going to be fresh water?
Yeah.
When I say, well, let me restate that. Will the water that's used be filtered and recycled in any way?
Not in the current design, but it can be done.
Okay. I mean, that's a lot of water usage. It's just getting dumped down the drain. So I'd like to see some, either recycling method or some consideration for water usage. I mean, that could be all day long, just dumping water on a hot day, which I don't think is the best practice to have.
Hold on. Is that how this fountain works? That it's flowing through and going into the drain?
Yes.
Better recycle.
Yes.
It's only money.
It's only money, yes.
Mr. Draymond?
Well, I'd like to ask just...
Well, actually, just to clarify, Mr. Najarian, you mean that the water usage would be reclaimed and reused, rather than using recycled water to sprinkle on the kids? I mean, just so, I know it sounds funny, but just so...
Yes, recycled water has two meanings.
Exactly. I mean, so that after it's, we're talking about recycling after it is used, not sprinkling water on them in a play-splash area that is not filtered in some way to be dousing kids.
If I can, though, a different design would be like a swimming pool, where you take the water, capture the tank, filter it, chlorinate it, and then...
And that's fine, too. I'm saying I'd like clarification of what it is we're talking about.
Mr. Chapchan?
If you wouldn't mind, Pat, and maybe talk about, we've talked to other cities about systems that they have like that. It's very expensive, and whenever a child soils the water, they've got to come in and clean the entire water. So in the end, it may end up costing more from, this is what we've heard from other cities, that it's not a system that they really like at this point. Now, to reclaim the water and use it for, I think we've got bioswell. We're planning on using some of that. But in terms of recycling that water and chlorinating it, it's just like a pool. If it gets soiled, you've got to bring someone in and really clean it out, and you shut the whole thing down for a day. So there's some problems with chlorinating it.
We're going to need water to irrigate the grass, so perhaps, I don't know, holding tanks for what we do, but something to...
Right, yeah. Do you want to talk about that?
Well, then it would be gray water at that point.
Yes, it would be gray water, and it would need to go to the sewer or need to go underground.
I think we have to be sensitive about this point. We don't have a swimming pool design yet, and I'm getting emails from people saying that we shouldn't, we should scrap those designs, because all the water that a swimming pool will use, not just for the city, but for private pools as well. And then, on the other hand, we've got a water usage that's potentially in the tens of thousands of gallons a day.
We've got the figures here as far as the water usage, and I'd just like to share those with you.
And we're going to have an ordinance tonight that says you can't even wash your car at home. No, we're going to modify that ordinance, but still, you're right.
I don't think there's any reason why this couldn't be gray water that's used for irrigation. I think our ordinance allows it as long as it's piped underground.
Well, there's, we've done extensive studies on this, and there's several options you have. Well, you can capture your rainwater. You can capture your gray water, and then you can put it in a tank underground, and you can reuse it for irrigation purposes. But that still has to be brought back up to the surface, exposed to UV rays, and then recycled, basically in a fountain or a water feature somehow, but it can't come into human contact use. So basically, it's what calls recycled water or contaminated water. Now, we'll design the irrigation system as such that that would be designed to the LA County Health Department reclaim water standards, which is all the purple pipe and those kinds of things. So you could recapture your rainwater, your water coming off your roof, your parking lots, your basketball courts, put it underground in a tank and recycle this. That's not a whole lot of water you're going to recycle. Now, your splash pad will produce, I think they have here, about 7,500 gallons a day in a normal use. Now, that's proposed on an eight-hour use, basically 20 to 40 gallons an hour. So you have that window, that your gallonage, when you have the operation on, your water can be recaptured. But in the wintertime, it's going to be turned off, so you're not going to capture that. The only thing you're going to capture is what rainwater falls on the surface that goes into the tank. So it's, and when you put it underground tank, you have to have basically a filtration system also. So you can't get away from a filtration system, because you can't put contaminated water or...
In terms of cost, I mean, are we talking about $200,000, $300,000, $150,000? What would be some ballpark figure?
You're talking to put the system on just the spray pad area, an underground tank with a chlorinating or cleaning system, filtration, you're talking $150,000, $200,000. Now, over the life of the project, it's going to take 50 to 60 years to pay for that, so...
And how about a recycling and then it gets used in irrigation? How much would that be?
You're probably talking about the same amount of cost, but that's forever. I mean...
Mr. Friedman?
What about, is this the same as the type of capturing devices that you see per sale sometimes for, just for residential uses?
Yeah, the big cisterns?
Yeah.
Big plastic cisterns.
But rather than piping it up where it can percolate in and then rise up naturally over time?
Well, you have two systems. You can put an underground cistern in that's full of gravel, but you have to do percolation tests in the ground to make sure the water goes down if you want to do that. And then that water goes down, and your normal city systems pump it back up. So that's one system. Or you can put it into a closed chamber, which the water goes in, and then it's brought back up and filtered through and airinated and put in the UV rays and goes back into the cistern. So when you use the water, it doesn't smell horribly. A lot of residents all over the world use it. Australia, New Zealand, Europe, they all capture the rainwater, and they use it to flush their toilets, or they use it to water their gardens. So it's that kind of use, but it can't be put back in the spray pad. It's got to be used for irrigation or something like that.
Unfortunately, in this case, if we did the percolating, it would go into that giant plume moving across the...
I don't want to add to it.
Mr. Draymond?
I was just going to say, well, that's a real selling point, is the water that really smells. Well...
I mean, we can take a look at doing the recycle thing and come back and give George the cost and things like that, so...
For me, that is a pretty important item, and I don't expect that it's one we can solve here this afternoon, but I, Mr. Quintero, I like the design I'm seeing in general, but I'm concerned about the water. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm concerned about the water, however, and on the spray splash pad, and about the recycling issue. So I'd like to hear some possible solutions to that.
May I just say one thing? On your irrigation system you have out there now, it's so old and inadequate. When we go to put the new irrigation system in, we're going to be using smart controllers, going to be low precipitation heads, those kinds of things. We're probably going to save you 20 to 30% right off the bat without doing anything over what you're spending out there in cost for water right now.
I understand all that. All I'm saying, and I appreciate it, all I'm saying is that I think you're hearing the comments, because we are telling our residents that we're going to be having some mandatory limits on water for their day-to-day use at home. It's very, I mean, it makes absolutely no sense for us then to go out there and spend money to put in a play area where 7,500 gallons of water going, potentially going down the drain per day. So I'm not sure. I don't know about my colleagues. I'm pretty sure I know, though, but I'm not interested in that either. So I'd like to hear some options to that, some solutions for that when we come back.
We'll come back.
And Mr. Quintero, I think I cut in on Mr. Najarian's time. I'm sorry.
I had one other... That, he'll be followed by Ms. Friedman and then Mr. Weaver.
No, I like the design. Maybe we can put our heads together and come up with something that would suit the water conservation issue. But my other point is, how shall I put it delicately? What's with this name, Griffith Manor? Was there a house on this? Did Colonel Griffith have a manor on this lot? You know, and the manor has all sorts of racial overtones, I think, at the same time, the manor house of the Southern Estates. Why don't we change the name? Griffith is a name associated with another large park in the city of Los Angeles.
I mean, Griffith is a name associated with another large park in the city of Los Angeles, let's change it. Who's up for that?
Oh, oh, no, it, it's a different reference, Mr. Najarian, it refers to folksy and friendly, you know, like Andy Griff, in the manner of Andy Griff. No, I'm just kidding, that's...
Oh, an airport park.
I mean, is there a history to that? I'd like to know if there is. I mean, it's, I think it's an opportunity to place, I never figured this name out, I've been thinking about it for a while, I never had the guts to bring it up. Um, of course, that's not your realm, that's, that's our problem, but if it's, if it's related to Colonel Griffith of Griffith Park fame, I think it ties us into the city of Los Angeles, which I don't think is appropriate. The manor, was there an estate on this park before? What? Where's our historical society when we need 'em?
Well, you can't just smoke your pen on the dais and have them appear.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to hear, this, again, is a long-term issue, not related to the immediate questions at hand, but, um...
However, it is one of our oldest parks, and, uh, so, I'm, I'm sure the history of it is, I don't know it, but I'm sure the history of it is well documented.
We'll have to Google it.
Ms. Friedman?
Um, thank you. Just a couple of questions and comments. Um, first, I haven't been here before to, to see this, so, um, uh, it's nice to meet you, and...
Nice to meet you.
Um, you, because you're in a redevelopment area, you had, didn't have to go in front of the designer view board, but unfortunate, which is good news for you, but unfortunately for you, I came from the designer review board, so I, I have this, you know, habits that just die hard, so some of this had, has to relate to that. Um, first of all, in terms of the water, um, you know, I agree, it would be great if we can make it happen, but we can't, we, we have to find a use for that water, that's not dumping in a, and in terms of reclaimed water, you know, they drink it in San Diego, so, you know, we're gonna get there at some point, and if you think about it, it's all been recycled anyway. Um, and, uh, so I'm curious to see if there's technology now for those cisterns that allows us to use the water in some way, maybe it's not recycling it for use in the playground, uh, playground, but maybe for irrigation or, or something else, or maybe we can...
That's doable.
Somehow treat our reclaimed water in the city to make it to where it's one level up to, to use, I don't know, but it's something I think we really need to look into. And in terms of water, I, I, we need to bring that same critical eye to the whole park. Um, I know you have drought-resistant species that you're proposing, which is great, and I thank you for that. Um, but even the grass, we need to be sure that we really look at alternatives like yarrow and, and other species that require even less water than, than turf, or the hybrid buffalo grasses that they have now from UC Davis, that supposedly use eighty percent less water even than marathon sod. So I, I wanna be sure that whatever we do becomes a demonstration for our residents of what you can do with almost no water. So if we, we should be able to get away with watering this twice a week, even in the summer, and if we can't, then we're not planting the right things. So I would like to see that, I would like to see a, an irrigation plan, that's, that's a two-time-a-week irrigation plan, period. And I, I won't vote for anything that's more than three days a week.
Well, uh, there, there is one thing on this park, uh, that we, we can't get away from, is your existing trees. Your existing trees are used to a certain amount of water, and I know they're mature trees, so they're gonna be using less water than a new tree, but we can't restrict ourselves to saying, well, we're gonna irrigate once a week or twice a week and then watch the mature trees die, or get diseases, so we have to maintain that level of irrigation and match the turf grass basic to that irrigation requirement.
Excellent point, they get a pass, and the turf grass around them get a pass, but not the new plants.
Okay.
Um, so as they grow and die, maybe we can replace them with something else. Um, just a few random thoughts. Um, have, have you been finding in, in the playgrounds you've been designing that people are requesting for perimeter fences around just the playgrounds? Even for the children? No? Okay.
What they're usually requesting is, um, universal access, and what your piece of play equipment, your existing one, and the new we put in, has the ADE accessibility to all ages, and, and no matter what your physical ability is, you can use the play equipment.
And then the perimeter fence is such that it, they're to the, the standard where a toddler can't slip through, right? Or a child, okay.
Oh, yeah, our preventer, yes, yes, that was one of the requests from the mothers there, that we put something up there, they don't walk into the street.
Um, I was, uh, very happy that you're looking at energy efficiency in the community building. Um, I would like that building to be to the standard of a LEED building, even if it's not itself LEED, I think that's really important. And I'm, you know, we have an opportunity, it's a new building, to make it equivalent to LEED gold, and I think we need to, need to set that example. So, again, I won't support anything that's any less than that. It's a small building, so it shouldn't be that difficult. Um, I have a question, the shade arbor that you show, is that the arbor that you're proposing?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I, I'm just a little confused about the disparity between the very modern, um, shelter that you have on the left side of that page, which, you know, looks like your roof with the, the metal, which is beautiful, by the way, the single-post shelter, and then on the right, which is a sort of classical, traditional look.
Well, in, in the area, in the park where we have the arbor, we have very large shade trees around there, so there really wasn't a need to provide shade, we just wanted to provide some structure that gave you a feeling that you're...
I understand that, I, I'm just referring to the, to the style.
To the style.
Yeah, I think that you need to, that the styles should be married in some way, so that they have some reference. And the same with the furniture, and I think Alan Loomis, our urban designers here, and maybe he can give you some input to that, but I would suggest that. But otherwise, I think it's gonna be a great addition to the neighborhood, I'm really excited to see it going in.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Weaver?
I guess the arbor could be painted a same shade as the one to the left, and it would blend in much more, even with just that style, even though I understand what Ms. Friedman is saying. Um, now, if you wanna talk about other names for it, you said you incorporated designs similar to airport hangars, as it is close to the airport, maybe something in the name should have airport in it, I don't know, as we did have the first airport on the west side of the country, this would be a nice touch to have something, I don't know what you call it, West Side Airport, or Glendale Airport Park, or something.
Grand Central Airport.
Grand Central Airport Park, something along that line, it's just a thought.
If I may, I, I think we're gonna be going to the Parks Commission with a naming of the Cedar Mini Park, we wanna call it something else, and maybe we can do that same process there and then bring it back to the council for, if that's something you'd like us to do.
Griffith Park is a little ways away, um, in another city.
It's, it's really, really your call, if you'd like us to, to explore that, we can do that, if not, then we can...
We've got nothing to lose by...
No, but if there's gonna be any renaming of parks, the city council needs to, uh, do it.
I'm with the mayor with that one, a hundred percent.
Oh, no, no, they can make their recommendations, and we can overturn them.
Okay.
I had one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, for comparison, I'm just trying to remember my, how many gallons a day of whatever you said be used in the park in the water feature?
Uh, about seventy-five-hundred.
What does an average house use in Glendale a day? Anybody recall from what I, five-hundred, Ms. Milano? Okay, just trying to get a comparison between a house and that, it's using quite a bit more.
Uh, yeah, but that, that's on a day, and then they're usually only used four months of the year, so you have eight months of the year.
Okay, so figure it out on a yearly basis, and then you got a better comparison.
Right.
Okay, thank you, I like it.
Hey, I'm going to go to the public in a minute, let me make my, uh, comments. Uh, starting with the water usage, uh, yeah, we have got to come up with a program, and at a hundred-and-fifty thousand, it seems to me that's gonna make a lot of, uh, a lot of sense to recycle, use it for irrigation, I think that's probably the best bet, because we've had this conversation with Mr. Chapchan in the past, and he has mentioned that the whole sort of recycling and reuse hasn't, uh, just doesn't work. I, I think we go with the irrigation plan, that's a better bet. And then absolutely, the grasses need to be drought tolerant all, all the way, I mean, I, it doesn't make any sense to, to do anything other than that. That shade, uh, shelter is perfect, I like the way it mimics the, uh, the community building itself. Uh, the arbor, I agree, the arbor doesn't really go, that design doesn't, uh, doesn't go at all. But what, and by the way, it doesn't shade the area either, you're saying that because of the surrounding trees, that there's really, it's not about shade, it's just to define the space.
Right, it's about the sense of place.
Yeah, okay. But I do think it should, you know, sort of tie in with the shade shelter, the community building.
We'll come back with some different examples.
Yeah, and then we do need to, uh, design a super-energy efficient building, it's small, and, uh, this is our chance to, uh, to do something, and there's no, I see there isn't any, aren't any solar panels proposed, I hope we can talk to GWP and see what, uh, what we can do with, uh, solar panels, it's brand-new, it's small, it's...
I, I talked to him, we have so many trees there, and there's so much shade.
Is that right? So near this building, it just...
So much limited with those huge, huge big trees that we have.
Right, well, then that answers that question. Um, but anyway, let's make it as solar efficient as possible, and I like the design a lot, there's a lot of buildings in this neighborhood that sort of, uh, you know, look like it, and it does tie into the aviation. So all in all, I can't tell you how happy I am that we keep getting closer and closer to building this magnificent park. These, uh, neighbors certainly, uh, certainly deserve it, and it's gonna be well-used, I'm sure. Uh, I have a question, why is the basketball court being fenced off? What was the reason, uh, behind that?
Um...
I know the public wanted it, but what, uh...
Yeah, the public wanted it, but, um, they wanted basically to have it regulated, so that, that, you know, illicit activities don't happen on there, uh, so, and if they start happening, they can close it off until that activity goes away, and that was the only reason.
Right, okay, no, that works, that works for me. Any other questions or comments? All right, I've got one speaker, Herbert Milano.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. I can tell you, this is, uh, the, the dialogue that I just heard and, and the debate that you presented is, is really terrific. Um, I think the design is, is really outstanding for this park, for this area of Glendale. Um, and, uh, I'm really encouraged about the, uh, just the, the, the level of concern that all of you have shown today. Um, I want to bring up a, a related topic with regard to the park, 'cause I, I'm encouraging, um, the redevelopment agency to, to ask, to schedule monthly public reports on the, on the project itself, and I'd like to see, perhaps, because this project is basically a three-million-dollar project for twelve months, that it could be used as a, as a way of familiarizing you and the public with project management methodology and, and the things that I tend not to see here, which is a, a gang chart and a project plan, so that on a month-to-month basis, you see that the, that the project is moving along, and also to keep you abreast of, to see if the project's scope is changing, as it is changing today, and, uh, and that the timelines are, are met, because it would be fantastic for this project, that only takes about six months to complete, uh, for, for the actual construction to, uh, to be available by the beginning of next summer. So that if you, um, decide that the project should be, the park should be available by then, let's say by the beginning of July or a year from now, that the project plan is presented to you, so that you could see all the obstacles, um, and how a particular timeline can slip, or how the scope can begin to change significantly and the impacts that it has. The, um, so ideally, by displaying a, a top-level project plan, um, you will appreciate how, and the public can appreciate the actual performance of management and the project managers with regard to bringing a project across. Um, as you know, I've mentioned several times my concern with regard to projects going over budget, um, and, uh, and the perception that the public gets with regard to how they actually wind up millions of dollars over, over budget. I think that you have a significantly, uh, competent team, um, who are guiding this project along, and I would love to see the opportunity of seeing for five to ten minutes, once a month, you know, an overview with a gang chart with regard to how this project is moving along, and what obstacles they're finding that actually can be, uh, disclosed to you. This way, the public would know that the, uh, that the original budget assigned for this project will be met, and that the timeline as well will be met, and that the obstacles are being taken care of fairly quickly. So that's my suggestion, that the, uh, that we could benefit significantly by having the public at large seeing this project plan move along, and they're seeing visually, and it aids in, uh, in instructing, you know, the rest of the staff members, and you yourselves, and the public, with regard to how a project could be taken to fruition, under budget and on time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Starburn?
Well, all, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, this isn't the first time Mr. Milano's indicated, and I think his last statement at a previous meeting is that with the city is consistently tens of millions of dollars over budget on capital projects. I'd like to request of Mr. Milano, uh, at his leisure, when he can, because I know he looks at the various city documents, a listing of those projects in the past several years that had been tens of millions of dollars over budget. Uh, I don't think that's reflective of what actually occurs here in our capital improvement program, but if he believes it is, I'd be happy to, uh, to take a look at those projects specifically.
Two comments, one, on that, since I was a project manager for some twenty-five years, um, I worked with Critical Path Networks, whatever, um, I don't know if that's the extent that, that we do here, but I, and you're saying, yes, you do, okay, so you know exactly where you're at, and I know as a person who worked with him, our colonels and department, he has never looked at those kind of things, was left up to the project manager to inform top management if there was a problem, and that's where I think I stand on that. The other, I would, I forgot to ask John if he would explain about the parking, um, how many more spaces, it looks like we got spaces along Flower there.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, councilmen, we were, uh, we have looked at the Flower Street, you know, we're widening it right now?
Right.
Uh, north of the driveway, we have, uh, parallel parking, and we have three lanes that we're planning to construct, so we won't have room to construct, put in angled parking, otherwise we have...
But you can get at least parallel parking.
Oh, yes, parallel parking all along Flower from Roberta, south of the, uh, driveway to the park, and north of the driveway to the park, we will have a, a parallel parking.
You happen to know offhand, between the parking lot and the on-street parking, how many spaces there'll be?
Between the driveway to, to the south, there'll be six spaces. To the north, uh, I don't have a count on it, there at least will be twenty to thirty spaces, 'cause it goes all the way to the new ramp that we're building off of Western.
And then you have the parking lot with...
Parking lot has sixteen spaces.
Sixteen, so they're doubling the number of spaces on the parking lot, plus the on-street parking.
'Cause I can see events happen there on weekends, they're gonna bring a lot more people in that have been there in the past, so, okay, there's additional spaces.
What are gonna be the hours for the, uh, on-street parking?
We don't right now have any limitations right now.
Unlimited?
Yes, if there's a problem, we can come back to council with some recommendations.
Ms. Friedman?
Do we need the parking on-site, in your opinion?
The, uh, the on-site parking? The park, I believe, had eight parking spaces, and it wasn't as used as much, but with the new, new facility that is being built, I believe that you will need, uh, the on-site parking. Now, at some point in the future, if it's not being used, obviously, you can turn that into some other, uh, you know, athletic facility or something, or court, but right now, it appears based on the expansion of the park, and I don't have a good number as far as the usage, just because maybe George can...
And I think they can correct me if I'm wrong, the project managers, but I think this is something the community asked for. They, they needed more parking during the weekends when they had, uh, when a lot of users used the park.
It's, uh, assuming it's a water-permeable paving material?
Yeah. Yeah.
Water-permeable surface for the lot?
Pervious concrete.
Uh, yeah, what, if you want to, um, if you wanna collect the water and use it to recycle the water, it's best to go with an asphalt parking lot, that way you get the ninety percent to ninety-five percent runoff. If you go with a interlocking paving stone or a permeable paving that lets the water go through, your water's going underground, and you're not gonna be able to reuse it, so...
But running into, into what? I mean, we don't have, so you're saying if we install something to recycle?
Yes, if you install an underground cistern or a chamber to collect the water, it's better to go with an asphalt parking lot, plus an asphalt parking lot's about a third of the cost of a permeable parking lot.
So it sounds like if we're gonna do the recycling of water on-site, we'll go, we'll tie it in, otherwise we'll go with permeable. Okay, um, a question while you're there about the building, one more question. Question while you're there about the building, one more question. I'm a little concerned, and this is maybe more of a question for Mr. Chapchan, about the building and the lack of, at least the way I'm seeing it, the plans, the lack of windows, whether you think that's sort of a safety concern, given that it's a public building and a park. I just wonder whether having more windows would make it, people more likely to use it and making it more transparent so you could see what's happening inside.
Well, the front of the building has a very large glass front, and we're allowing light to come in there. And the back of the building has basically the same amount of glass in the back. Has a set of double doors, six-foot-wide double doors that open, two panels on either side. And we really don't have any, well, we have the, basically the slots, the small slots for the restroom building. So we have a lot of light, and it's per Title 24 requirements. So there is a sufficient light in there, plus we have the clear story up in the roof that allows light in there, so. And it's an open vault that touches the ceiling. So you've got a lot of room, and it'll feel like a light space. It's probably, that room's probably going to be, oh, the building's going to be about as big as this room, and that room will probably be two-thirds of the building. So it's going to be a fairly light space.
But having said that, that is a concern, and we'll see if the windows get etched, if they don't.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that it should or it shouldn't. I just want to be sure that it's not something that people are afraid to go into because they can't see who's inside.
Mr. Weaver?
You'll also pick up parking on Thompson, too. It's all red zone now with driveways, so three or four more spaces there, too. If you never need, don't need parking in there, I can just see the best use of it, about the size of a tennis court, I'd probably fit there if we don't need the parking, but I can't foresee that.
And just another comment, I know Mr. Milano asks for updates. We give you monthly updates and a biweekly, and anytime there's an update on the projects, we put it in there. There's a description of the original project, as you know, with updates monthly.
Okay, I need a motion in a second.
Some moved on 1A for the agency.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments?
With the direction that we...
Right, with the direction as to recycling and so...